It's 5:30, actually a little past 5:30. Time to call our meeting to order for June the 18th. Roll call please, Carl.
Councilmember Remley.
Here.
Ronain.
Here.
Lunsman.
Slate Hanson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Bunsonis.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Rux.
Here.
Mayor Leeson.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll mention before we start here, City Manager Lynn is out of town today, so he will not be with us, but with that, we'll proceed on our own and entertain a motion to approve last week's minutes and also the minutes of the voter canvas on June the 11th.
So move. Second.
Motion, Rux, second by Bunsonis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries. Tonight, we have the pleasure of the Police Department here to present an award. Who is handling that?
We are actually going to present that award at a national night now, so my apologies on the award piece for that.
Okay.
To the end of the annual report.
Alright, good. So then, under old business, we have two items, ordinance 1806-06 and 1806-07, both dealing with the cable franchise situation that were passed last time and presented now for final adoption, and I will turn it over to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, these are for 1806-06, which involves the MidCo franchise, and 1806-07, which is the NVC franchise renewal. I believe that we do have representatives of both entities out here for NVC and MidCo. And then I also asked to join us, and he's joining us telephonically, is the city's own legal consultant on this, Brian Grogan from the Moss Barnett Firm in Minneapolis. I would like to inform the council that I did not receive any comments at all this week in opposition or support, but as is typical, no comments at all, and I don't believe that there are any changes that are being proposed, and would ask that the council approve both, the second reading of both ordinances tonight. I move 1806-06.
Second.
Motion by Ronain and second by Slate Hanson to approve 1806-06, which is the one that deals with Mid-Continent. Questions or comments on the motion to approve?
Yes, I'm going to oppose like I did last week. I really struggle with, first off, I'm not a cable subscriber, so I have no real financial impact here, but I'm not a subscriber of that we seem to just increase fees because we can grab more of these providers' profits because someone else has done it. My understanding is that this is compensation for their use of our right-of-way, and if that is the case, shouldn't there be a set amount, like a rental of a building or some other structure? But it seems in this case, if we can get more, we'll try to get it. And so, that's the basic cable, the increase in advertising, if we're going to grab more of someone's advertising costs or revenues. The peg fee is a fee that's going to be put onto our citizens, and I'm not willing to do that without some kind of sunset involved, because these are just for capital costs. We have no plan. I heard last week, our plan was, we'll see what we can collect, and then we'll come up with our plan. That's not a plan. We don't do that in city finances. We have a plan. We then fund that plan. So, I am not in favor of this type of negotiations, I guess, and so I'm going to be voting no. We really don't even know if the increase in what we are going to collect on the basic is going to have an impact in our citizens' rights, but we're just willing to do it because we have maybe a way of funding a position for public access. I think we have greater priorities in this community, and so, for those reasons, I am not going to support these ordinance changes.
Other questions, comments?
In reference to what you said, Dave, I wasn't here last week, and so, I read in the paper the comments that you had made and that you had voted against it, and I thought, gosh, you know, I really agree with Dave, and I am really going to have to ask some questions about this before I vote for it this week, because I thought it was in favor of it, up until I read that you were against it. And so, then I watched the video from last week's meeting, and listened to the conversation, and asked a few more questions, and I completely understand where you're coming from with not having a plan, but I think that the biggest, I think we've discussed this enough that we do have a plan, it's just not cemented, because we have no idea what the income's going to be. We have a real rough estimate, but I'm really, I've always been proud of the way that Carl and Lynn do our budgeting, in that they're very conservative, and so, I'd hate to see them go out and put together a big plan for $100,000 of income next year, and hire somebody, and start buying capital equipment, and then have it come in at $50,000, and then we've got to make up the rest of it. So, the way I understand it, is that we're going to wait until the 2020 budget process, which is a year from now. By that point, they'll have six months' worth of income from this in, or six months plus, and they'll have a really good feel for how much income there will be, and then they'll be able to do this for the 2020. And I tell you, it's interesting also, I was just, I guess it was over the weekend, and I was talking about this, I don't remember how it even came up, but I was talking about it with my children, and about what a great program I think this is going to be, not just for, you know, we've talked about how the students will be able to work with it up at the high school, and they already kind of are, because they have their own channel, but now there's going to be more channels, and so, more people will have the opportunity to utilize the programming, or, you know, learn how to utilize the programming. I can see, I was talking to my son, who works part-time at the library, about how there's a possibility that people can do stuff at the library, and learn how to do programs, and put them on this, put them on these channels, and maybe something at the ARC, and I'm, you know, my mind is just going like this, and this, and this, so I'm excited about it, and so I am going to vote for it.
You know, I agree, first of all, with Ms. Slate Hanson, that I'm comfortable giving the administration a few months to determine what our income is on a monthly basis, before they actually put into place what Mr. Bunsonis refers to as a actual program for us to do. Otherwise, frankly, would be premature, it would be reckless, and I do appreciate that we don't act in that manner. But I think the characterization that on this policy, or in other instances, that this council tries to get what it can, I think that was your phrase, you know, I think that's just plain wrong. The meetings that I attended were ones where we were talking about what can we do to enhance the services that we're providing to our community, and one of them was through this contract, that we are going to be able to provide additional services to our community. That is our job. That's what drives this council. What can we do to make this community better, and here is an opportunity for us to do just that. You know, we don't do what we can to tax our citizenry at every turn. In fact, when administration talks to us about our user fees for water, for sewer, so on and so forth, we have among the lowest in the state. You know, we responsibly use our taxpayers' money, and I think this is another instance in which we've done that. I support these two ordinances, and I hope that they are adopted.
You know, and I appreciate, Dave, you've been a stalwart on this for years. I'm glad to say you're not a cable user, we want to avoid any conflict of interest there, but it is one of those things, where I look at this, is also about open government. Right now, we complain about the channels we have, and the access to them, and that at times our stuff doesn't play, or can't play, or can't be televised, et cetera. Having the necessary equipment, and being able to fund for that equipment, will help this process, as well as provide opportunities for other city organizations or other meetings. I take a look at the Planning Commission, the Zoning Board, why can't we get those out on a channel access? Also, why can't we do that type of stuff? We need the equipment to do it, because our equipment is antiquated, and let's replace that, and at the same point, we can do a lot of other things. There's a lot of things even in the city we can do. The library would love to be able to record some programs and put them out, because not everyone can make it to an event that they put on. Not to mention that as far as educational opportunities, as far as concerts, games for all our schools, and including Northern in presentation, there's an opportunity for them with the right equipment to be able to have access to this, and further increase their presence out even on TV, but even on the web. So, that's why I support this, and I understand, you know, this seems like, you know, we're again adding another fee, but I think what we get in return that the public can use is worth the cost. And then I think, once we get those expenses on, that capital expense is done, I don't look for this fee to stay the same the whole time. Sure, we have to plan for replacement, but the initial problem is, or the initial funding is going to come for the initial purchase of equipment, and then, you know, like everything else, you're on a 10-year replacement plan, you just have to have enough money to replace the equipment as it gets worn out. So, I think this will be a good thing. I hope that we can increase our access, not only for government, but for other entities without, out in our community, to be able to put some of this stuff, and really show people in this community what is out there. Because right now, I watch these channels, it's not a whole lot on them, and I think if we could have the equipment to fill these channels up with content, and things going on in our community, it's so much better. I go to many numerous other communities, and they have council meetings, they have sporting things, they have, I mean, their channels are full, and ours is basically messages popping back and forth.
Anyone else comment on the motion? If not, Carl, we have a motion and a second for second reading and final adoption of 1806-06 relating to Mid-Continent.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
No.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. That brings us to the next one, which is a same issue, different company, for Northern Valley Communications, to entertain a motion on that.
So move.
Motion, Slate Hanson, and second by Rux. Questions or comments on this one? Carl?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries, and thank you to Mr. Grogan for standing by in case we needed you, as it turned out, we didn't. If he was still on the phone.
Yep, no, still here. Very good, Mayor, thanks so much.
You bet, thanks. You can stay with us if you want, but you don't have to.
Alright, see you, Brian.
Bye-bye.
Next item on the agenda is items A, B, and C on our consent calendar, routine city business.
Move.
Second.
Motion, Remley, second by Ronain. Questions on any? All in favor approving, then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries. Under new business, this is your point of time for hearing on applications for new retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm licenses. For Miller &amp; Holmes, Inc. at 202 Sixth Avenue Southwest, Casey's Retail at 224 South Dakota, Target Corporation at 3316 Seventh Avenue Southeast, ShopCo on North Highway 281, Kessler's Fuel at 702 Sixth Avenue, and Kessler's Liquor at 621 Sixth Avenue. Presuming nobody's here to speak in opposition to any of these, if not, entertain a motion to approve all.
Move. Second.
Motion, Remley, second by Olson. Questions on any? All in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries. Item B is a request from the Police Department to declare laptop computers as surplus property. Carl, is this you, or?
Well, actually, it's probably a combination between Dave and I.
Okay.
Dave, I'll let you start.
Oh, thanks. So, these Panasonic laptop computers used to be in the patrol cars, and since then, we phased those out, and we don't use this particular laptop anymore. However, the Brown County Sheriff's Office and their deputies still use some of these, so the county IT director asked if we could surplus these laptops to their division, so they can use these as parts to continue the longevity of the Panasonic laptop for the sheriff's office.
Move, approval. Second.
Motion, Rux, second by Remley. Any questions on this? All in favor of approving that request, then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries. Item C is a request from water reclamation to declare a 2003 Biosolids application tank as surplus property. Neither Lynn nor Peggy are here, but they say on what they sent us, this is a routine dedication of surplus property, declaration of surplus property, so.
Move. Second.
Motion by Remley, and second by Johnson. Robin is the person here who knows about this stuff. Anything we should know about this?
It's also known a honeyway, as a honeyway.
Okay.
You want to get rid of this one, yes.
Alright. Questions or comments? All in favor of approving that, then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries. Bills presented for payments tonight from city departments, $582,008.33. CenturyLink phone charges for June, $41.28. Services at the airport, Northern Electric, 249, NVC, 306, and Verizon, 31. Municipal league payment for a workshop for the finance department, $50. Utility bill refunds, $26,16. Barnes Group postage payment, $42.31. UPS charge of $38. Country concrete work on Kerbin Gutter at 1307 North Lloyd, $1,574. Concrete testing to Forrester Testing, $3,685. J&amp;K mowing service, code enforcement abatement, payment of $391. Northern truck equipment, $26,000 for a dump body spill shield, $26,474. Concrete work right in Sudlow, $95,846. Northern Electric Utilities, $99.93. Split utility locates for South Dakota One Call, $619. Morrison Construction Sludge Removal, $77.36. Northwest Energy for Hardway, $25.93. Senior Center Flood Insurance Payment to American Bankers, $94.08. And a late addition, $25 a witness fee for Donald Beaker.
Move, approval. Second.
Motion, Johnson, second by Remley. Questions on any of those bills? Carl?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries, and with Lynn not here, we have a substitute for the city manager's report, the police chief report. Chief McNeil.
Alright, thank you, Mayor and council, for giving us this opportunity tonight to talk a little bit about the annual report, and receive any questions you may have. Before we get started, I want to give you an update on a couple of things. We've talked a little bit in the past about our chaplain program, and I want to kind of just explain and introduce to you our chaplain coordinator, John Drogi, and he'll talk a little bit about what we've been doing in our chaplain program. They've been incredible for the support they give us, the police officer, and the community, and some of those tragic incidences that have happened over the course of the years. They've done a great job. The other person I want to recognize tonight is Dr. Stephanie Sorenson. She is a licensed psychologist, and we partnered with her to be somebody that can help us build the peer support program, and the critical incident stress management program for the officers. She's worked with John, and together, they're doing a great job, and I want to recognize them a little bit, and if you guys would want to come up and just introduce yourself, and any comment that you'd have on the programs we're working on. Stephanie also, if I didn't mention, does our pre-employment testing for officers too as well, so.
So, we have organized a chaplain program to all local first responder departments, including the fire department, police department, sheriff's department, highway patrol, and Aberdeen Rural Fire Department. Chief Dave McNeil and Chief Randy Meister have been extremely supportive of the program, particularly, kudos to Chief McNeil, he has supported everything in the critical incident stress, and the management, and the chaplaincy program. Just mentioning a few things that we've done, we've brought trainings in that have been organized and offered locally, including basic chaplain training classes, critical incident stress management courses, including assisting individuals in crisis, and group crisis intervention, which have been readily used to help our officers and our fire personnel. Chaplains have been involved with each of the departments in various activities, including station visits, ride-alongs, shift changes, department trainings, department drills, national night out, run from the police, bike rodeo, swearing-in ceremonies. We've offered training to departments on chaplaincy and critical incident stress management. Did want to mention some of the critical incidents that we've been involved in, we've been involved with death notifications, and this is standing by an officer, just complimenting what they're doing in their investigation. Unattended deaths, that's a death on arrival, upon a welfare check. Suicides, we've been involved with a number of suicides here in Aberdeen. A number of other, personal visits with department personnel during or after personal crises related to the job, or personally. Community activities with the Corin and Somali population. Finally, we've also been involved with helping and supporting other municipalities, we're actually starting to branch out. We've helped Sioux Falls develop a chaplaincy program, and I'm actually traveling to Jamestown tomorrow to help them develop a chaplaincy program. I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Sorenson.
I am Stephanie Sorenson. I've been working with the Aberdeen Police Department since July, doing the pre-hire psychological screening, to ensure that any officers being considered for employment are appropriate in terms of their psychological stability, emotional, mental stability, things like that. And then, John and I have been working on developing the peer support team for the police officers in the police department. John is acting as the program coordinator, and I am the clinical advisor. So, what we do, we also work with about nine officers, we have a sergeant involved, a detective. They get trained, and similar things like the chaplains, they've done the assisting individuals and groups in crisis, and so, the goal of the team essentially, is we help provide training to the officers, so that they can kind of look out for each other, you know, if they're noticing that one of the officers is struggling, maybe they have something significant or traumatic going on in either their personal or professional lives. It's just an organized group that can be there, available to help both officers and their family members. And then we also work, we've got two other mental health professionals that work with us, and so, we can be available to do any of the debriefing, in case there were a critical incident or a traumatic incident, and the goal of debriefing is just to kind of process what happened, and mitigate any type of post-traumatic stress that the officers, or anybody involved chaplains, can be a participant in the briefing session, to just mitigate that post-traumatic stress that they might experience. So, it's been a very, very cool project to be a part of.
I really want to thank you for being involved in that and partnering with us, so. I just wanted to recognize them, because they have done a lot of work, and they help support us and keep us strong, and they're doing great work within the department and community, so, thank you. Any questions for them at all, while we have them here? Alright, thank you. One other thing I want to bring an update to is, if you remember, in 2016, we asked the council to consider giving us an ARMOURD CAR, kind of the acronym known as an MRAP. And I know at that time, you know, we saw in different places in our country, that maybe those things weren't maybe used in the best way, or they had a negative perception because of their use. Well, you allowed us to acquire that through a military surplus program, and in 2017, we made that operational. I just want to tell you, as you probably read in the paper, we've had three critical incidents within the recent months, and each one of those incidents, we've used that to keep the officer safe, and to operationalize communication with the distressed person. So, they've made a huge difference. The officers will thank you for allowing us to have that piece of equipment, it's been used to keep us safe, it's been used to resolve situations and de-escalate, so I just want to bring up the speed on how we're using that piece of equipment, and, you know, our appreciation for that. As we move into the annual report, hopefully you have a copy of that, and I'll allocate a time for you to ask questions, but the thing I want to bring your attention to on the annual report, is, you know, I talk a little bit about some of the things, the crime statistics, some of the trends that I saw in the previous year, and I just would say that the primary biggest challenge and hurdle and threat to the community is a drug-related problem. The 2017 state crime report, the Attorney General noted that there was a 50% increase in drug arrests in the last five years. So, it's not just Aberdeen that's experiencing this problem, it's the community and country in general. So, you know, having that is a challenging, and seeing how these really terrible drugs are destroying people's lives, it's a pretty serious problem we're all up against, and we're all fighting. And I just want to say, on the enforcement side, you've given us a lot of tools and resources to be able to take the appropriate enforcement action. For instance, you've allowed us to have two drug detection dogs, which are being deployed, and they do make a difference. We have a full-time drug investigator and staff assigned to the drug task force, we had trained drug recognition experts on the department, and one of our focuses constantly is apprehending and stopping impaired drivers. We have a great piece to the education side of trying to combat the drug problem. We have the partnership with the public schools in northern state with the school resource officers. We give a lot of different educational presentations and programs, and we're really invested in the DARE program, and, you know, we graduate seven to eight hundred kids out of that program every year. We have a lot of other community policing programs that are focused on the education and prevention. The prevention side of trying to mitigate some violence and destructive things in our community, we're doing a lot of security assessments in the community, that's a free thing. We have trained people that will come out and actually assess a building, a church, a school, whatever that is, and we'll go in, and from the outside of the building, moving in, we examine everything, to include the business practices, how desks are configured, and people are really taking advantage of that. And when we do the security assessment program, we also do active shooter training, or the Alice training, and we also are involved in the crime-free housing programs. Those are just some things that we're trying to do to make sure that we're responsible in trying to mitigate some of the biggest things we see and problems in our community. There's a lot of challenges, but there are some successes too. And with that, I will take any questions that anybody has about the annual report or anything in general.
Questions, Dave?
Let's see now, page 32. Page 32. There's four graphs that, excuse me, that kind of drew my attention, disturbance fight calls, domestic violent calls, drug-related calls, and DUI arrests. You can't see anything, you know, older than 2014, but it just appears that we've kind of gone to another level. You know, you can see in like disturbance fight calls, or, you know, maybe around that 1,200, now we're into the 1,600, 1,700 range, and the same thing happens with domestic violence calls, and drug-related, it's just out of this world. What do you see as something that's causing this trend, appears a trend upward?
I see there's a lot of different things that are kind of interrelated, the availability of the drug, you know, the illegal drug has a big impact. I think mental health is a profound, you know, situation, and people are in dire need within our community. The domestic violence, you know, so basically, the drug problem is related to domestic violence, it's related to mental health. Mental health is related to domestic violence and the drug problem, so these things are intertwined, and we are, we're seeing these things increase, and I think, you know, from the enforcement side, I think we're doing a good job, but knowing that, seeing these trends, and seeing our calls for service, as we met last year when we did our workload analysis project, seeing the trends, and seeing some crime categories climbing and climbing, we basically determined, we're going to need more resources on our department to answer calls, and to continue our community policing programs that do make a difference. So, I wish I had more of an answer to that, other than, there's such an availability and the mental health problem is very, very acute in our community, and those things, you know, kind of fuel and intertwine with some of these other crime categories.
So, what's the drug of choice? What are you seeing on the street?
Right now, there's a lot of concern about opiate-based things, and legitimately so. And we see some of those in Aberdeen, but the methamphetamine has a really, really strong presence in our community. That's the majority, you know, and that's a very dangerous drug, a very hard drug. And so, the methamphetamine is very available and, you know, saturated in our community.
I think in the past, I saw the drug dogs out more. Has there been a change or strategy with?
With our drug dogs, we're looking at, we have a great partnership with the schools. So, the public schools request that we come in and do a drug sniff periodically. But at the same time, we've gone to other places like postal outlets. We've seen that drugs come not only in cars, but they come through our postal outlets, and we've seen a lot of increase in that. So, we're doing that, and just being on the streets and taking, you know, being observant and having directed patrols in areas where we've seen, you know, traffic-related problems and disturbances makes a difference too. I've seen an increase in the public connection with taking calls for service related to bad driving, to suspicious behavior, fighting, residential suspicious activity that may be related to drugs. So, the community is doing a good job. They're doing what we're asking. They're connecting with us in a lot of different ways, and that's making us busier too, and a lot of times. For instance, the chart that you talked about, the drug-related calls, we get a lot of different calls of people living in their neighborhoods, and they see disturbing trends, suspicious activity, possible buys, drops, different things like that. So, the community's doing a good job. We're busier with those calls.
Have you seen any impact with 211?
211 has done a good job as it's moving. Briefing and update that I had not too long ago is we were made aware of all the mental health-related calls that 211 is actually utilizing. So, I see that as a good program, and it's gaining momentum. And over time, I think that's another great resource that people can utilize. So, and it's needed. So, I think it does fill a need.
So, you, I hate to hog the time here, but you asked for two officers last year, and the grant was, didn't come to pay for those two officers. Do you see in the future that you're going to be coming for another officer, maybe for the school resource officers?
I do. So, as we talk tonight, the school system has reached out to us, and they've asked for another school resource officer. And that officer would be used, you know, we have one in the high school. We have one that splits time in the junior highs and then tries to help the elementarys when needed. So, the school sees that they would like to have one in the middle school, and then, in a geographic way, those middle school officers would help the elementary. So, the school wants to enter a partnership with us on a 75%, 25% cost share. I've talked to the city manager about that, and we haven't had our budget meetings yet, but that's something that I think is realistic, and I would be an advocate for.
Who pays 75%?
The school would pay 75%, and we would pay 25. And based on that needs analysis and the workload analysis, we can easily show that, you know, between that two and six and eight officers, we can justify that based on our calls for service.
Does that, you know, the officers work in the schools, does that lead to discovering families that have issues, crimes that are being committed?
I don't think so. Given the way our society is right now, you know, with mandatory reporters and the things, the training and the improvement that teachers and counselors have, you know, encountered over the years, we have a lot of referrals of possible child abuse and neglect in the schools. So, that school resource officer comes to know those families and those kids. A lot of times, they're assigned some of those investigations. So, I think that it's almost a natural fit that we have that school resource officer. But, you know, there's some things that, there's a clear line in discipline on what the teachers in the school people do. But, you know, just on a daily basis, I don't know if you'd be surprised, but we have kids that, you know, want to leave school. And with the new probation parole, the juvenile reforms, there are a lot of kids that are on probation, intensive things. So, it's good to have that school resource officer in the school to handle some of those problems. And, you know, the security component of it too. The last day of school this year, we had an escaped person, you know, that had connections to the community and came right to Aberdeen, and the car was sitting outside in the parking lot. And the school resource officer encountered that person, saw him, and, you know, we were able to do that. So, just in our society, sadly, I think it's a necessity, in my opinion, to have a school resource officer, and we're blessed by having that.
Clint, you had your end.
You kind of hit it on a little bit, but in some of the, you know, your charts, which are very good, I see your 911 calls are going down, but your calls for service are going up. And is that, like I say, you kind of hit on it where, you know, you have your mandatory reporters, you have your other people who may not be calling 911, but working directly with officers or calling the police station. Is that where that increase is coming from, even as your 911 calls go down? Or?
The 911 calls, as it goes down, you know, some of it was related to how people would use cell phones, and maybe the use of smartphones have decreased a little bit of that. I know that, you know, and probably about 2014, you know, about those years, we started to really try to significantly utilize social media. And in a small way, that helps a little bit, connecting with people and answering questions. Again, I don't know if that specifically related to the 911 call. But it's still a fair amount, but, you know, the cellphone has a part in that too. And there are less landlines now too. So, I don't know, is more people use their cellphone for primary communication and have, you know, disabled their landline, maybe there's less in that manner too. Good question, though.
I noticed your crimes investigated by the Detective Division. From '06 to '15, every year, it was between 630 and 800 and some. And then, in the last two years, under 500.
Yes.
Significant, is that a different classification or?
And that was how, that number was significant because of the way that we would handle certain things. Urine collected for suspected drug use. And so, when we, it was turned over to us because of a suspected hit or hot hit on a urine test, we would take that and process and make a case out of that. But some of the juvenile justice reforms have kind of changed that, so we don't have as many urine collections as we did during those timeframes.
You and I talked earlier today too, and one area that, you know, most of these are either flat or getting better, you know, really the vast majority of them. But one that wasn't was theft calls, and I was wondering why that went from in the 600 area to the 800 or 900 area, and you had said that it was shoplifting.
Yes, the significant increase is in shoplifting. And I have to give officers credit. A few years ago, they started a retail theft coalition. So, in essence, they brought in business leaders and managers of different businesses in town and began to meet with them on a frequent basis to understand what the problems were, to gather some common information, and then try to come up with strategies and ways to mitigate the theft. So, the officers working on that project, I think, increased awareness. And the technology now that stores have, you can pretty much guarantee in our day and age, everything's caught on camera. And so, taking an image of somebody taking something and not knowing who that is, a lot of times, we'll put it on our Facebook page, and within a few minutes, we'll have, you know, an identification, so. But I know some businesses have increased their loss prevention staff because of the shrinkage. It's unbelievable the amount of things that the loss that some of these stores have. So, shoplifting was a big part of that. Yeah.
Any else? Questions? You know, we've got time for more, but one thing I think we should note here, you know, it's not a surprise to those of us who have lived here, this is just an incredibly crime-free place to live. I mean, the chance of a resident of Aberdeen who is going about business in a non-criminal way, getting up in the morning and getting through the day without encountering some kind of a random crime is almost 100%.
I think we're in a very safe community. And anytime we talk about it, if you're in law enforcement, you're superstitious. So, I knew you were going to bring this up, and I brought my rabbit's foot tonight. So, you know, absolutely right. So, I mean, you know, we're very blessed.
And we, you know, we shouldn't spend a tremendous amount of time patting ourselves on the back, because this is generally the, nationwide crimes going down everywhere. Generally, it has been for 20 years. But in South Dakota, generally, it's just an incredibly crime-free place to live compared to just about anywhere else.
You know, and you're right. I mean, so, the crime is kind of at a certain level. It's the mental health piece too that's the biggest challenge. You know, I know our hospitals and our mental health facilities are really struggling to provide resources. And Dr. Sorenson, do you want to add to any of that at all? Yeah, there's some significant challenges out there, and I know that our lawmakers are looking at ways to build resources on both part of the state to try to work through this. And one thing that I think personally is that because we see this drug problem is so profound, and it's just destroying people's lives, I'm afraid that in the next 10 or 15 years, we're going to experience the health crisis now as people have used these very damaging drugs. Then 10 or 15 years, they're going to start experiencing the catastrophic cancers, you know, the significant illnesses related to this hard drug use. And I think that we're going to see some sad trends in the future.
Well, congratulations on your report, and thanks to your entire agency and all your people. You know, we talk about crime rate going down, but all, you know, police agencies have just gotten a lot smarter over the last 10, 12 years, and it shows, so.
Well, we get a lot of support. I have to give the council credit. I have to give Lynn credit. We constantly bug Ron. Ron does a great job, so he's doing a great job helping us in a lot of different aspects. So, from the citizens to the council and the officers that are doing work, we're blessed to be in this community and have the resources we do.
One last thing, as long as you're here. Personnel situation, are we looking for people? Are we, I know we're constantly trying to diversify, and there's a challenge in that. Just maybe briefly tell us our situation there, and we'll let you go.
Certainly. So, going back to what Dave asked about, we did the workload analysis, and we got authorization to add two additional officers to our staff. And right now, we've hired, we've done hiring, and we're doing testing. We have one open position right now. We have a few people. One person retired, a couple people left, went to move to different parts of different states. So, we have one opening right now, and we have lots of good applications. And so, hopefully, those people will turn out. But if, going back to that strategic planning that we had at the beginning of the year, you bring up a good point, that one of the toughest jobs to fill right now is the police and fire position. So, both Chief Meister and I are always looking for good people. That was one of my, a couple of the goals I had this year too, is to find some people in the community that would like to be reserve officers and police explorers. So, we do have those programs too.
Anyone else before we let them go?
One final comment. I'd just like to compliment the chief. You know, my career has been a years ago, and I just really would like to recognize these folks on, you know, in those horrible incidents that officers face in the line of duty. In the past, the focus was on the victims, the families. And no one really cared about the officer. There was not much concern given to that officer that handled that incident. And consequently, we lost a lot of officers over the years, good officers, because they weren't given the attention they needed. And so, I just want to compliment you for what you've created here, for the well-being of the police officers in the city of Aberdeen. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks again, chief.
Thank you.
Anything else from the council before we adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Motion Bunsonis, second by Ronane. Do you adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.